Ladies, it's once again that time. We are looking at Revelation 16 today, and it's the seven bowls of God's wrath. Exciting stuff. So we're going to dive in. But first, let's pray because this is a chapter that we're going to need to talk about God's justice. He is just, and He is the Justifier, remember? So for those who believe in Him, there is very, very good news. But in this chapter, we're going to see that those inhabitants of the earth, as John has been calling those who follow the beast and have the mark of the beast, for those, it's not such good news. In fact, it's eternally bad. And I know that causes questions to come in our minds as far as God is concerned. So we're going to look at some of those today. Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for your word. Thank you for your love and grace that we're going to see illustrated in this chapter by its opposite, by the justice that God demands for being created and for the redemption He's provided. So be with us, Lord, as we look at the specifics of this chapter, these seven bowls of wrath, and that we engage the questions that they cause in our own minds. For it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen. So I'm going to start out with a story that happened yesterday because in it, I started thinking about some of the details in this chapter. It's... I know you've had those days that you think, "Why does it have to be so hard?" And usually, that question comes after things have been hard or they've been strange or they continue in small steps to be more and more difficult. And I had one of those episodes yesterday. It all started over a week ago when I had a car accident and someone ran a four-way stop and ran into my car, which ended up being totaled. And so I had been dealing with trying to get with the insurance adjusters, get that decided, send the title, which is what I was trying to do yesterday. And so in an attempt, I was trying to get to... Because the post office has taken... Lost a check of mine lately for six weeks and because a Christmas card didn't show up for a month, I thought, "I'm going to take this somewhere else because this title needs to get there because not until the title gets there can I get what I'm owed for the car." So that was the pressure on me yesterday to get to the place, to get this in the mail, to overnight it. And in the process, I was taking a thermos of coffee and I was going towards picking up something when the coffee thermos somehow came loose and I realized the top was not firmly on. And all of a sudden, more than a cup of coffee spilled on my most expensive rug and pretty well soaked a portion of it, but it didn't stop there. It decided it wanted some floor time. And then I looked at the wall and probably about six feet horizontally of my wall had coffee dripping down it. And it was six feet up and it didn't even get satisfied with the wall. It decided it wanted to go on the window and the blinds. And so in an attempt to get out of the house in a hurry, I ended up having to stop probably for about 30 minutes or a little bit more and clean up all these things. And as I was cleaning each blind, each and every blind, I just started thinking about, "What must it have been like for God when His world was fallen?" It fell. I mean, if you read the first chapter of Genesis, you see that everything was good. It was very good. And then He rested on the Sabbath because He had created this magnificent world and there were people and they were perfect. And then not long after that, at least in the story He gives us in chapters two and three, we see things have just gone all wrong. And ever since that time, that's what we're reading about in the book of Revelation. What is it like for God? And I thought about each individual blind I was having to clean. And I thought, "Man, think of God and all the people who've lived on this earth. Each one a sinner. And what is it like for Him to think about recreating this, renewing it, restoring it over this amount of time?" And when I thought of that, I thought, "You know, 30 minutes wait is probably not that bad." And I had tools like OxiClean and some other things to use. But that's what we're dealing with today in this chapter, that something's gone awfully wrong. And God has a world that there is a personality behind the evil in it. And there are other accomplices with that personality trying to achieve the destruction of what He created to be perfect. And so with that, I'm going to start reading this chapter. But I know you can commiserate with me because I know you've been through many instances of what I described. So let us take heart. There is a God who knows the solution and not only knows it, but has told us the plan for it and is working out His plan. So verse 1 of chapter 16. "Then I heard a loud voice from the temple saying to the seven angels, 'Go pour out the seven bowls of God's wrath on the earth.'" Now, this is not the first time those angels have been introduced. They were introduced in the last chapter, in chapter 15, which was sort of just an interlude, if you will, seeing the blessed ones and hearing the song of Moses and the Lamb. But here, we're getting to the particulars of these seven angels and the bowls of wrath. So John heard a loud voice from the temple. Remember last week, we talked about in the temple, he saw the tabernacle of the testimony and the temple was opened. And we talked about that being the holy of holies. So John is hearing a voice come out of the temple. It's God's voice. And so God is saying, "Go pour out the seven bowls of God's wrath on the earth." The first angel went and poured out his bowl on the land and ugly and painful sores broke out on the people who had the mark of the beast and worshiped His image. So in the questions you were given for preparation for this chapter, you were asked about this. Who gave that message? And who is receiving these bowls of wrath? In this verse, we see it's specific. It's those who have the mark of the beast. So those who were mentioned in this last chapter, who sang the song of Moses and the song of the Lamb, they are not mentioned here. This, these are those... This is punishment for those who have decided they will not follow the Lamb. We're going to find out just how strong their resistance is as we read along. You also were asking the questions to compare this with the trumpets. And so you saw that this is like one of the plagues of Egypt. And you had a reference to look back to that in Exodus. "The second angel poured out his bowl on the sea and it turned into blood like that of a dead man. And every living thing in the sea died." Again, you were asked to compare. And this was like another plague, the plague of blood. Remember, we've also talked about the comparison of the deliverer of the Old Testament, Moses. We talked about that last week. And now, the deliverer of the New Testament, the Lamb. So we're put back in the mind of slavery and our slavery to sin. And we see that these people are enslaved to sin and these bowls of wrath are now being called into action and poured out upon them by these angels. So notice that the bowl... First bowl was poured out on the land. The second bowl is poured out onto the sea. So that is salt water. "The third angel poured out his bowl on the rivers and springs of water and they became blood. Then I heard the angel in charge of the waters say, 'You are just in these judgments, you who are and who were the Holy One because you have so judged; for they have shed the blood of your saints and prophets and you have given them blood to drink as they deserve.'" So it's almost like an eye for an eye, blood for blood. But now, the third angel, it was land, then it was sea, now it's freshwater streams. And this compares, recall, with those trumpets. It's the four... We're going to find four regions of the earth so that it's covering the entire earth. Then this angel that was in charge of the waters sings a song that is reminiscent of the song that was sung in chapter 15, that God is righteous. He's the king of the ages. Just and true are your ways. And so now, we see that again, we reprise that refrain. "You are just in these judgments." Listen to what God has called here. "You who are and who were the Holy One." Now, in previous times when we saw when we saw these words, "who are, who were, and who will be," or "who is to come," this time, we only see two of these phrases, "who are" and "who were" because guess what? Now He's come and we're seeing His judgment. So he heard from the altar. This is John. "I heard the altar respond, 'Yes, Lord God Almighty, true and just are your judgments.'" That is like the refrain in the previous chapter. So the emphasis here is on justice. And when we finish this, we're going to talk about God's justice for a while because it's hard. It's difficult for us as people who love people who haven't come to understand saving grace, the saving grace that Jesus has offered through His blood. It's hard for us to square this away with a loving God. So we'll talk about that. But let's go ahead and look at this full complement of these angels. "The fourth angel poured out his bowl on the sun." Now, another version says, "on the air." And I want to make something of that in a moment. But the fourth angel poured out his bowl on the sun. The idea is it's the heavenly body. So it's the land, it's the saltwater sea, it's the freshwater streams, and now it's everything God created. So he poured out his bowl on the sun and the sun was given power to scorch people with fire. Oh, this is... It gets worse. "They were seared by the intense heat and they cursed the name of God who had control over these plagues; but they refused to repent and glorify Him." That's some strong resistance. And it puts you in mind again of the Egyptian plagues when Pharaoh finally gave in and said, "No more. I repent and I will let your people go." And when the plague discontinued then, after that, he changed his mind and he went back to no repentance, no change of mind, no following God, the one who had brought these plagues on because He's just. And so we see the intense resistance of these followers of the beast who bear His mark. "The fifth angel poured out his bowl on the throne of the beast." Okay, where do you go after you've covered all of creation? You go to the perpetrator of this Himself. And you remember in one of the churches spoken about in the first chapters, two and three, of the letters that were written to these churches, that there was a church and Satan's throne was in that city. And so now, this ruler of... He's called the prince and ruler of the air. And so this idea that the fourth angel poured out his bowl on the sun, on the air, on the heavenly... The heavenly bodies mean something here, that Satan has been in control of... He's the ruler of the air, the kingdom of darkness. So the fifth angel poured out his bowl on the throne of the beast and his kingdom was plunged into darkness. Men gnawed their tongues in agony and cursed the God of heaven because of their pains and their sores, but they refused to repent of what they had done. Do you see the ingrained resistance? They... Even though they see God's power, even though there's singing in the background of the justice of what God is doing in bringing these plagues upon the people because the wages of sin is death and everyone, every knee will bow, every tongue will confess that Jesus is Lord. And you either do it because you've been entered into the kingdom of grace or you do it because you have not bent your knee or your head and you've refused. But now you must because you're forced because He is the only sovereign Lord. So one way or another, you are going to call Him that at the end. "The sixth angel poured out his bowl on the great river Euphrates and its water was dried up to prepare the way for the kings from the east." Let's talk about that a minute. We've heard of those, all those armies that took Israel and then Judah into exile. Those armies came from this direction, from the north. So this... What is being talked about here and in the next instance is this gathering ground where we're going to find out Armageddon is fought. And it's a trade route. It's the way you get from those kingdoms down to Egypt, basically. So it's a trade route from there. So Babylon, Persia, and Assyria all came from that direction. That's what's being talked about. So the ground is being dried up so that the armies can advance and the last battle fought. "Then I saw three evil spirits that looked like frogs and they came out of the mouth of the dragon, out of the mouth of the beast and out of the mouth of the false prophet." So we have the throne of the beast, but we have this unholy trinity. We have the dragon, the devil, and then we have, so to speak, the antichrist, the beast from the land and... Sorry, the beast from the sea and the beast from the land is the false prophet. And so the three of them now are going to meet up and there's going to be a cataclysmic crash of power. But there is one power that cannot be defeated and this unholy trinity is going to lose its place. They are spirits of demons performing miraculous signs and they go out to the kings of the entire world, of the whole world, to gather them for the battle on the great day of God Almighty. So you can see, this is leading up to that battle. But it's also... The curtain is being drawn. And now that those other... The seals and the trumpets destroyed a fourth, then a third, and now this is final. So we're leading to the final battle. But if you've ever killed a snake, you know it still flails around after its head has been chopped off even. And so this unholy trinity is not going down easily. And so we're still going to hear about it. It's not going to end just in this chapter. I hate to tell you. We've got a few more chapters of this battle being talked about. But each chapter is going to add a different dimension. But here, we see the throne being destroyed and a passageway being allowed to gather the armies from all of the nations. Now, who are these armies? And are we talking about literal? Are we talking about figurative? Well, that would depend on what approach you're coming from. And the approach being taught here is you have learned by now that it's figurative. So we're going to explore this in this next angel. But before we get there, we have another blessing. I did give you a list. Claudia sent it out to you of the seven blessings in the book. And this is the next one. It's chapter 16 and verse 15. "Behold, I come like a thief. Blessed is he who stays awake and keeps his clothes with him so that he may not go naked and be shamefully exposed." You know, that has all sorts of meanings. If you go back to the garden, they were naked and unashamed until they sinned and then they had to be clothed. And on this side of heaven, we need to keep our clothes with us because we've got work to do. And what this blessing is about is being prepared. Stay awake, stay alert. Remember, Jesus even asked His disciples, who accompanied Him to the garden of Gethsemane, to stay and pray with Him. And then every time He came back, they were sleeping. And He asked them, "Can you not stay with Me?" And so Jesus today asks us, "Are you ready? Are you alert to what is happening? Do you hear My word? Are you just engaged in all that this earth provides, all this world provides, all the pleasures, all the joy and happiness that you can derive from everything that He's actually created for your delight and joy, but not as an end game, only as the means to enjoy what He's given you? And He is the end game." Let me read this blessing again and take it fully in. "Behold, I come like a thief. We don't know when He's coming. Jesus doesn't even know when He's coming. Blessed is he who stays awake and keeps his clothes with Him so that he may not go naked and be shamefully exposed." Our clothes right now are the robe of Christ. He's the one who has lived a totally righteous life. He's never sinned. And He takes that off and gives it to us as His beloved children. And He says, "Here, take this. You're going to need this in this life." And it is our salvation. It is our armor. And so we don't stand on our own righteousness. We stand in His and we follow Him. So get the deeper meaning of this and stay alert. Follow Him. Listen to His words. Be with those who encourage you in His ways. Verse 16. Then, we pick back up with a story. "Then they gathered..." These are those evil spirits, the holy... The unholy trinity and these frogs. One commentator said, "They just keep croaking." They keep croaking, hoping to achieve something that they're never going to achieve. "Then they gathered the kings together to the place that in Hebrew is called Armageddon." Okay, let's talk about this. The word Armageddon shows up in the whole Bible, Old Testament, New Testament, only here. So we don't have a reference point. We go back to other places in Scripture to try and figure out what this means. And literally, it comes to mean Mount of Megiddo. And we're going to look at a passage in Ezekiel in just a minute because there are points in the Old Testament we can look to. But Megiddo was a city on that trade route that I was talking about earlier, from the northern kingdoms down to Egypt. And so you had to pass through the country of Israel in that trade route. And Megiddo is a city in Israel on that trade route. It's next to a plain called Estraloon. And on that plain, many battles have been fought there. And I'm going to name a few of them. If you remember from Judges, Cisera, the one whom Deborah defeated, the judge Deborah. That battle was fought there. Gideon defeated the Midians and the Malachites there in Judges 6. Solomon fortified Megiddo to guard the pass because it was a pass-through. And battles were fought there. Jehu's army defeated the army of Jezebel there. You can look that up in 2 Kings 9. Josiah was killed at Megiddo in an attempt to block Egyptian armies. You can find that in 2 Kings 23. But of more recent vintage, the Six-Day War in 1967 was fought there to give you some idea of what the meaning of Armageddon might bring. If I say 9/11, immediately, you have a picture in your mind of something. So it becomes a symbol. It becomes a metaphor of this terrorist destruction. If I say Gettysburg, you think of the Gettysburg Address. You think of the Civil War. You think of a war that was fought between the United States. And even in these days, you know, some are saying, "Are we going to have another civil war? That things are so divided." But so Armageddon itself, although it doesn't show up in any other passage in the Bible as that word, Armageddon, Megiddo does. And H-A-R is the Hebrew word meaning mount. Har-Megiddo is where Armageddon comes from. Kister Macher says this in his commentary. "Arma... We have no absolute certainty as what the word actually refers to. All our approaches are at best mere guesses." So I want you to understand that and not teach some... and not teach something as certain that is not certain. But he says this, "I regard the term Armageddon as a symbol by which God delivers His people from harm and demonstrates that He has the power and might to overthrow His enemy." Now, I want to read you another quote from another source. "There was so much bloodshed in these plains," and that is in the plain of Estralon, near Jazriel and Megiddo. "There was so much bloodshed in these plains that both Jazriel and Megiddo became synonyms for violence and bloodshed and could even become symbols for the judgment of God. The mountain of Megiddo in Hebrew, har Megiddo, anglicized into Armageddon, became the ultimate symbol for warfare and conflict." So we ask, is this a literal battle? Or is that what is meant here? That this is the last conflagration of God and this unholy trinity? That it's going to end? This battle is finally going to end? And that's what this Armageddon stands for. Is it going to be fought literally in Israel? Some say so. That is not the perspective we come from. So we take it more symbolically. But I want to go back to what Kistemacher said because I want you to hear what we've talked about previously. Every time you see God's judgment, you also see His grace. You see His saving power. Because that judgment is against evil, is against sin. And yet, there is a people saved up out of sin that followed the Lamb. And so what brings harm to some brings salvation to others. Let me read again what Kistemacher says. Because Dennis Brachter was the one I was quoting before, that it's a symbol for warfare and conflict. And Kistemacher says, "He regards the term as a symbol by which God delivers His people from harm and demonstrates that He has the power and might to overthrow His enemies." So it encompasses both judgment and grace. I want you to see that. Because oftentimes, we think of the horror of this battle. But the horror of the battle is God's being the just and the justifier. More about that when we finish the Seventh Angel. So let's push ahead here. "The Seventh Angel poured out His bowl into the air, and out of the temple came a loud voice from the throne, saying, 'It is done.'" "Then there came flashes of lightning, rumblings, peals of thunder, and a severe earthquake. No earthquake like it has ever occurred since man has been on earth. So tremendous was the quake. The great city split into three parts, and the cities of the nations collapsed. God remembered Babylon the Great and gave her the cup filled with a wine of fury of His wrath. Every island fled away, and the mountains could not be found. From the sky, huge hailstones of about a hundred pounds each fell upon men. And they cursed God on account of the plague of hell because the plague was so terrible." Do you hear what's being said there? Even when there is no hope and the point has been made, there is no repentance. There's only anger at God and cursing of God. So you come to understand that what these people really want is nothing to do with God. And that's exactly what they get, as horrible as that thought is. And what is hell but nothing to do with God? It is no relationship to God. So they don't want a world in which God exists. That's what they get. But let's go back just a minute and explore this. "The Seventh Angel poured out His bowl into the air and on the air, as I was talking about before. And out of the temple," again, this is where God sits, "came a loud voice from the throne, and you know who sits on that throne, saying, 'It is done.'" Does it remind you of Jesus on the cross? And when He said, "It is finished"? On the cross, "it is finished" meant that Satan was defeated. And so here is the realization of the whole complement of our salvation. It's not just election. It's not just conversion. It's not just sanctification. It is glorification, that that is where we're going. That is the end of our salvation. It's not yet realized, you see, although we're saved, although we're protected, although we're sealed. All those things we've explored here in this book are true. But here, this loud voice says, "It is done." The judgment is over. You know, as I am in my office and I have a glass door, I get visitors that come by and wave and try to make me laugh. But notice the, this isn't, we've explored Revelation as a book of sights and sounds. And you don't get this scene without all these sounds that you're used to when God shows up. It's the flashes of lightning and the rumblings and the peals of thunder and an earthquake. And it's an earthquake like, there's no comparison of this earthquake up to that time. And we have to understand any time in the future on this earth, this is the quake that's going to end all quakes. What does this mean, that the great city is split into three parts and cities of the nations collapse? Some have identified this city as Jerusalem. Some have identified it as Babylon. And some have said, guess what? That it's not literal, that it's a figurative city. And it stands for all the kingdoms of the world that have not bowed their knee to Jesus. And by kingdoms, I mean peoples. There are peoples from every tongue and tribe and nation that are gathered here. And so it means utter destruction. It's broken into, it's split into three parts. And the cities of the nations collapsed. In other words, history as we know it is ending. "God remembered Babylon the Great and gave her the cup filled with a wine of fury of His wrath." Babylon the Great is going to, we're going to see the woman on the beast and the fall of Babylon in the two chapters coming up. So we're going to explore that more. But Babylon the Great in John's time would have been considered to be Rome. Babylon at one time, remember, took Israel into exile. And so we are dealing with this idea of a type. It's not a specific. This has happened many times in the history of the Old Testament as nations would invade and wreak God's judgment on His own people. And then they were taken into exile. And then God would wreak judgment on the nations that took them into exile. And so what is all this with God? This pursuit of justice? Why would He use, so to speak, ungodly nation to punish His own people who were following Him? It's because they weren't following Him. They made actions toward it, but they did not follow Him from their hearts. They were actually following idols. And then why would He punish a nation that He used as a vessel of judgment for His own people? It's for the same reason. They're not following Him. So this idea of God as just in this chapter and in the previous chapter and in some other previous chapters, we've seen that God is just. He's holy. He hates sin. And He has told us the wages of sin is death. And then He provides a way to not, to avoid the justice of what He's proclaimed, that the wages of sin is death, not to avoid it. That's the problem. He can't just give a free card of grace without enforcing His law. And so in the enforcing of His law, He does that with His own Son. So His own Son picks up the bowl of wrath here for the sin that all of His followers have perpetrated, and beginning with Adam and Eve. And then we inherited that sin nature. And then out of that sin nature, we do sin all the time. He asks us to confess our sins. And then He says, "I'm faithful and I'm just, and I will forgive you of that sin." But the forgiveness of, His forgiveness of our sins cost Him, do you see, the lifeblood of His eternal Son. And so the reason that Jesus had to come to earth, and I know you've heard this so many times before, but it bears repeating. He sent His one and only Son because only His Son was holy, as He was. Only His Son had never sinned. So His Son was not dying for His own sins. His sons, His Son was dying for our sins. He was punished. Our sins were laid upon Him, and His righteousness was laid upon us. So the only reason that we, that this door to heaven, the door standing open in heaven is open to us. And that curtain was split between the holy of holies and the holy place and opened up for us to walk in. The only reason, it has nothing to do with us. It has everything to do with the penalty that God put on His own Son in our place. And because we have bowed our heads, bowed our knees, kneeled down before Him and said, "You, our Lord," because of that, He accepts us. And we have not refused to repent. So we take that weekly confession of our sins very seriously in the service. Not as though if we forget a sin and it comes to mind later that we aren't forgiven. It's not that. It's that we are in the fold of God's people. And we've got to keep that relationship solid. And so we need to clear out the debris that collects over time from our sins. But God had to demand justice. But those who do not come under His wing, those who do not bend their knee, they don't repent. It's because they don't want anything to do with Him. And so that's what happens. I know that is hard. And there are those in my own family who have not come into that relationship yet. And I talk to them. I pray for them. I pray with them and bring the word. But this is a hard saying. And it's what, when Jesus was on earth and He said to disciples, and this is talking not about just the 12, but all who listened to His teaching, He said, "Unless you eat My flesh and drink My blood, you don't come." And that day, many left, saying it was too hard. But that is, in fact, what is being illustrated here. That, and it's what we illustrate in our communion. Not that we think that is the true body of Christ and the true blood, but that it's representing the sacrifice He made for us. So let's, do you know how much time I have? I'm trying to keep up.
46 minutes.
Okay, I have to end. So I was going to end in a different way. I want you to go and read Ezekiel 38 and 39. But I want to end with this. And I'll read Scripture, 2 Corinthians 10, 4 and 5. "The weapons we fight with are not the weapons of the world. On the contrary, the weapons we have, they have divine power to demolish strongholds. We demolish arguments and every pretension that sets itself up against the knowledge of God." That's all our philosophies, all of our cultural norms, let's say, that we resist because they stand against the Word of God. We have a spiritual weapon. It's called the truth. "We demolish arguments and every pretension that sets itself up against the knowledge of God. And we take captive every thought to make it obedient to Christ." And so let's remember the weapons that we do have. And I would say the tools. Confession is one of those tools. The reading of His word is another tool. The fellowship with those who encourage us in His ways is another tool. And the inhabitation of His Spirit and calling upon Him for the power that is spoken of in this passage. We have His power to live a life that is obedient and follows in His way. We'll pick up next time with this. And there's still something from last week that I'm going to bring to the table next week because we didn't get to it today. So let me pray, and I will see you next week. Dear Lord, thank you for this lesson. We thank you for Your justice that allowed a way for us. We pray, Lord, for those who still have opportunity to hear and not harden their hearts, but to repent. Draw them, Father, with Your Spirit. Allow us to be vessels to carry Your truth, not just in word, but in the way we live, that people might be attracted and see something that they can't explain, something otherworldly, something that doesn't play by the rules of the world, but ushers from a different place. Father, give us Your Spirit. Let us live accordingly. For it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.